Good evening, everybody. This is the August twenty one, twenty twenty five meeting of the planning board. I'm Mike Capuano. I'm the chairman of the planning board. With me tonight is our clerk, Jahan Habib, our members Lynn Richards, Luke Schuster, and Michael McNeely. The planning board has a quorum. Pursuant to the act, chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty five, this meeting of the planning board is being conducted via remote participation. A video recording of these proceedings is available on the city's website and emailing planningboard@Somervillema.gov. This meeting is being recorded. And we have a number of items on our agenda tonight. We'll get through them with with all deliberate speed. So first on our agenda is minutes approval for July seventeen, twenty twenty five. Does anybody have any suggested revisions to the draft minutes of? July seventeen? Yeah, Jahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question on the meeting minutes under the general business. It it says there's three lines and in every single line it says, following motion by Chair Capuano, seconded by Acting Chair Aboff. The board voted unanimously to approve the meeting minutes. I just wanted to double check to see whether whether the acting chair is necessary in this in this case, since you were, I believe, also present during that meeting.
Should be the vice chair.
Yeah, Steve Carey, that should say that should say Vice Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Steve.
And John, just so you know, with Amelia's absence tonight, you are the acting vice chair.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So let's make that correction. With that correction, anybody else have anything they would like to add or revise? Okay, seeing none, the chair moves to adopt as amended the draft meeting minutes of July seventeen, twenty twenty five, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can you call the roll?
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye, we have minutes. What I'm gonna do is take up a few things out of order. So fifty nine Oak Street has requested a continuance to September four. The chamber was to continue that agenda item to September four, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can you call the roll?
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye, the agenda item is continued. I would like to bring up three seventy nine Somerville Ave. It is my understanding that there's not yet been a person, a meeting or discussion between the staff and this particular applicant, as the planning board had suggested last time, but I'm hoping that the applicant's representative can fill us in and I'm assuming we're gonna need enough a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so you know, it's always that tough time of year, you know, August, but we had requested a continuance and, you know, waiting for planning staff to get, and as soon as we do, I don't think it's gonna take very long, so we're hoping that it's all ready to go for the next planning board in two weeks.
And for the record, can you just introduce yourself?
Apologies, I'm so sorry. Attorney Anne Vigarito on behalf of the applicant, four twenty four Broadway, Somerville.
Okay, and our next meeting is September four. Do you want a continuance to then, or do you want later than that?
September four, you know, if obviously if we still need more time, we'll ask for further continuance.
Sure. Okay, chair moves to continue to September four for three seventy nine Somerville Avenue, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can we have a roll call?
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye, thanks very much.
Thank you. I'll see you a little later tonight.
You you might not be waiting too long. The next thing we're gonna take up is forty four White Street, which is going to be.
And just like that, I'm back.
Yes, miraculous.
And I have Attorney Anne Vigarito on behalf of the applicant. I have extremely little to say because this is for a waiver. It's not a public hearing. I don't want to waste the board's valuable time. I'm gonna hand this right off to my favorite traffic engineer, Steve Saragusa.
For sure.
This is Steve Carey. I'm gonna promote Mr. Saragusa to panelist.
And Steve, just to be clear, we also have a representative from mobility in for staffs.
That's right. Yeah, Greg Hanafin is here for mobility. If you guys have any any questions, he can, he's he's on hand.
Yep. I just, yeah, I always want to take both the the applicant and staff's position before we vote if we can, so I appreciate that.
All right. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry, you cut in and out really quickly as I was being promoted to panelist, so I'm not sure if I missed anything there. Okay.
I just I don't want to hear from you and also from from the city staff, so.
Sure. So my name is Stephen Saragusa. I'm with Bowman Consulting. We are in three fifty mile Standish Boulevard in Taunton, Massachusetts. So we prepared a couple of a couple waiver requests and to get a so for parking utilization, we submitted a study on that. And we also submitted a memo to kind of just help understand what the parking situation is in this area of Somerville. I know we've had some back and forth with mobility and trying to kind of come to a consensus on, you know, what to present and how to present it. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions about anything that we've submitted. And I know, I'm sure Greg will have some comments as well, and I'm more than happy to discuss as needed.
Again, I appreciate that. So we we have a, you know, waiver for for a TIS, and I would love to get the way in of our mobility division as it relates to this project because as Attorney Figurito said, this is not a public hearing. This is a request for usual requirements for an application, so.
Hi, everyone. Greg Hanafin, transportation planner in the mobility division. So as Stephen said, we have been having some discussions about this project and they have applied for a special permit for parking relief to exceed the maximum allowed number of vehicle parking spaces in the zoning ordinance. This is a project in the MR four district in a transit area. And a half, it's a residential project and point five vehicle parking spaces are currently allowed per dwelling unit. It's a a three unit building, so half of three, one point five, so as not to exceed the maximum requirements, the ISD has made the termination that one vehicle parking space is what is currently allowed under the zoning ordinance. So typically, as it's written in the submittal requirements, in order to, as part of the special permit application, to exceed a parking maximum, a TIS is required. And what we would typically look at in this type of situation is a parking utilization study is usually the the study that we would request for the surrounding area. Because this is in a transit area and residents of this building are not eligible for on-street parking permits. In this specific case, the mobility, mobility division does not feel that parking utilization study of the surrounding area is relevant to the determination of whether a parking maximum should be exceeded because residents would not be able to utilize that parking under the current zoning regulations. So the mobility division doesn't feel that there is a transportation study that can be provided as support for exceeding the parking maximum. So we are in support of the applicant requesting their waiver.
Great. So we've got the applicant asking for a waiver for the for the TIS report. We've got the mobility division in support of that request. Does anybody on the planning board have any comments or questions of the applicant or of staff as to, again, this is not the the application for the building. This is not the application for the special permit. This is the request to to waive a certain requirement, to submit something to the city in order to get to the next step. It seems to me as a, both sides are on the on the same page and I I would be in support of waiving this particular requirement because the city doesn't believe it needs it. But let's have some, any any questions or discussions by the board, if if at all. Okay, seeing none, the chair moves to waive the requirement for a TIS report for forty four White Street, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Capuano, members of the board. We hope to see you soon for a public hearing.
Okay, so you, in in the next couple of weeks, we we will say, and we have you for for more things?
No, I just, I'm all done. So you, I'm here for the evening. Thank you.
Go home, have a have a have a cocktail. Next up, one ninety nine Elm Street, which is a continuance from the previous meeting. So if we could have one ninety nine Elm Street, please be unmuted. Please have the folks promoted as necessary.
This is Steve Carey. I'm promoting Paul Miller and Pablo Picker, two panelists. And Pablo, let me know if there is anyone else in attendance that should be promoted.
Hey, Steve, I think you cut up, you got Paul. Oh, and Curtis should be out there. Is Curtis there? As part of our landscapes architect team?
I will promote him as well.
Great, thank you. Let me know if I should jump in. Very good. Good evening, Board Chair Capuano and Board members. Good to see you guys again. Just a quick introduction. My name is Pablo Picker. I am the developer at the site one ninety nine Elm Street. Two weeks ago, we had a a great discussion in presenting the plans for this project. We spent the last couple of weeks addressing some of the requests that the board made at the last meeting. We think we made some good progress and we're looking forward to sharing those tonight with you in the public. So I'm gonna pass it off to Paul Miller, who's the principal architect on the project and and looking forward to the discussion afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pablo. Good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Miller, as Pablo just said, principal at Neighbor Architects, leading the design team on one ninety nine Elm Street. And I'm happy to be back tonight to present some updates in response to the comments we received two weeks ago. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Let's see, it says sharing needs to be turned on.
This is Steve Carey. I did just give you permission, so you should be able to share.
Perfect. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Can everyone see my screen? Okay, terrific. Okay, so just a quick recap for those who are joining tonight and maybe weren't at the presentation two weeks ago. The proposed project is a four-story building on an MR four parcel near Davis Square in Somerville at one ninety nine Elm Street. The proposed project includes a ground floor commercial space and three floors of residential apartments above with a mix of unit sizes. Our design started with the idea of preserving this mural and kind of lotline windows on the neighboring Cafe Revival and stepping the building back to create a small entry courtyard in the front that would give access both into our commercial space at one eighty nine Elm and also the residential lobby. And then above the building picks up on that stepping idea and steps two more times to create space for balconies for each of the street-facing units. And so the overall kind of design ideas here were a clear kind of base of the building that picks up on the scale of the context. The neighboring cafe and there's a couple of other restaurants down Elm Street. And then above this sand or buff-colored brick that recalls the kind of brick you see throughout Davis Square. And an oblique view kind of showing the lot line of the building. You can see that we broke the the upper massing into three distinct pieces by splitting the building with the stair tower and putting a glazed blue brick on that. And that helps break the scale of the building down into apartment-sized pieces. And so those design ideas we want to use to inform any other design decisions that we make. Last, in the last meeting, we heard from the board that they would like to see a public art or a mural component on the building as well as some articulation at the top of the building. So we're gonna show a few different ways of achieving those things today and then we'll we'll tell you what our preferred option is. Okay, so here is option one. The same front elevation. I'm gonna zoom into it to show the details here. So this, this for the, at the top of the building, we're showing two rows of soldier coarse brick and then an aluminum drip cap in the kind of black accent color you see down at the base and on the balconies. And then there's also a precast concrete lintel over the windows. And you can see on the stair tower, we're showing a mural. This is just a placeholder. When the project moves forward, we anticipate that we would be working with a muralist. We met with a local muralist this past week who did some work at Revival and started a conversation. So we feel really good about adding this kind of public art component to the project and we feel that the putting it on the stair tower integrates it really nicely with the architecture and it becomes kind of part of the architectural concept of the of the project. And we also, this is gonna be our preferred option. We like the subtlety of this. We like that it, the building is still read through its massing. This idea of having these vertical kind of apartment-sized pieces across the front of the facade to break it up. This cornice and lintel concept enhances that design idea. We're gonna show you two more ideas just for kind of as a counterpoint. This scheme has a more distinct cornice on the top, shown here in a kind of black aluminum, which again, the color of the balconies and and the the commercial base. And it is that cornice steps along with the massing and is aligned to the sides of each of those vertical upper massing pieces of the project. Which is in contrast to this next scheme where the cornice is continuous across all of the the upper massing. So this one starts to break apart that reading that we that we want to make sure that we have in the design of those distinct kind of vertical parts of the the upper massing. And then here's those three options next to each other just for comparison. So again, we would like to proceed with option one. And that's all that we prepared tonight. We're happy to take any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was finding my mute button difficult. Yeah. I I have my my thoughts on, first of all, I appreciate you coming forward with a couple of different options. I have my particular preference and some thoughts, but I would love to hear my colleagues' thoughts. So I think I saw Lynn's hand despite not being a Yellow Simpson's hand.
Yeah, I can, there we go. I just did it.
Hand hand. Hand bandit. Let's go.
Uh, thank you so much for integrating the mural on the revival side of the building. Love the blue, love the vertical aspect of it. Love that you talked to a muralist. I was also hoping that you would do a mural on the other side as well because that's a big, big blank wall.
I think we're, yeah, so I
go ahead and put it in the the conditions, but I did want to to, I did want to kind of ask on that other big, big blank wall.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I I'd like to let Pablo respond to that and then I can throw my two cents in about design as well.
Yeah, thank you, Member Richards. Yeah, we actually had a wow earlier today, just kind of preparing for the meeting and that we had that same discussion. That's the plan. We would like to do that. We kind of, we didn't show that view just because it it didn't seem to be needed, but but yes, we feel like the mural should kind of wrap to the other side. You know, that coming down rustle and that view with the site next door being set back so much, that's despite the tree there, we actually had a conversation with the muralist around the tree, you know. It's not on our site. Obviously, we don't want to be cutting down trees and regardless, it's not our property. But this particular muralist, whether she's the one that does the project or not, you know, she said it's totally fine. We actually looked at shots of the tree in Google Earth when it didn't have leaves. She said totally fine. We can integrate something really nicely on that side. So we're in agreement and would be happy with that condition.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and from the design side, I think it's the same, you know, the idea of the stair tower breaking down the scale of the massing is the same on the the north side of the building. And so I think it's, it would be excellent and we're excited to see that become part of the project.
Lynn, anything else?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Michael's got his Bot Simpson hand up. Let's go.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to express, you know, excitement about these designs to really appreciate that you're providing all these options. I'm definitely not the expert here, so I'm not gonna weigh in too hard on these three, but I appreciate that you're taking the comments to heart and trying to work on a great project here. I want to follow up on two items that both the the vice chair and I brought up at the last meeting. The first one being basically, if you've given it any more thought about how to handle the unit mix, I remember right off the cuff, you expressed that you had spent a lot of time thinking about it and that you didn't see a pathway to increase the number of bedrooms. And so I wanted to follow up on the vice chair's ask to maybe get a little bit more creative about accessibility as as maybe a good fallback option.
Sure. Would it be helpful to talk about the constraints on the project that make a three-bedroom challenging?
I mean, honestly, I'm I kind of am gonna trust you guys on this one. You guys seem to have spent a lot of time thinking about these constraints and concerns. And so I'm not too worried that you're, you know, kind of lying to us or anything like that. So if you want to jump right to explaining as to whether or not we can start including some more accessibility features, I think that would be a more prudent use of time personally, but I
Okay.
welcome the board to say otherwise.
So the project is required by code to, for all the units to be group one accessible? Are you, are you talking about group two accessibility?
Yes.
Okay. Pablo, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we can start. Thanks, Michael, for the bringing the conversation back to that. So just quickly, in terms of the unit size, we don't want to spend too much time on it, but just just to give context to the approach to the projects from the beginning. The very beginning, we had versions of this building with one bedroom and studio. And as a team, we, you know, we had discussions very early on about can we get three bedrooms into this, or can we increase the bedroom count? And and that just, it's just given the width, the two staircases, you know, we would end up essentially with like a twenty seven hundred square foot three-bedroom unit, which just seemed, you know, kind of not helpful generally. It seems like way too much space for for those types of bedrooms. So these two-bedroom units, we we like put a lot of emphasis as opposed to coming in with, you know, more one bedrooms. We kind of said, okay, these are really nice, generous two-bedrooms. You know, I have personally, me and my partner have a daughter. But an apartment with two bedrooms is more than enough for like our family. So that was just contextually like the approach to try to make this work, not try to maximize, you know, this kind of development from a financial point of view. So bringing it back to the accessibility, I mean, I think that what we discuss as a team is that it's, it it starts to get a little bit difficult to to make a group two work. You know, if we're talking about one unit, I know that as a team, we discussed that group two gets triggered at twenty units and I think at the minimum, it's five percent of those twenty units. In that kind of bigger development, totally makes sense to me to even push that five percent to something bigger. In a smaller development with, you know, with this unit count, it starts to feel challenging to make all of those conditions work, you know, within, if, for example, if we take the approach of one unit, it feels really challenging and we've looked at that. I can let Paul speak more to to the, you know, the architectural and spatial issues, but with regards to the, you know, circulation in the bathroom, the kitchen, the balcony going out, the door being, you know, zero threshold, it starts to feel tough to to kind of take that on on this development. Of course, open, you know, to the conversation and 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 pushback. But we discussed it and felt like it was kind of too big of a burden on such a low unit count. And given that we did a lot of, you know, put a lot of work to try to make these two bedrooms to cater to, you know, not big, big families, but families, felt like we were trying to find a, kind of find that balance. Those are my thoughts, but open to the, you know, more conversation. Paul, please feel free to jump on that.
I'll just add a little bit. Generally speaking, to to change a group one unit to a group two unit, the bathrooms get a little bit bigger. And the kitchens have to be modifiable so that you have knee space underneath the sink and the cooktop and the space between the sink and the cooktop. And so what we're, you know, we're talking about special cabinetry and then the the spatial challenge is a tough one on a on a tight site, like making one unit have a bigger bathroom means that there could be plumbing transfers and the layouts shift from one floor to the other. And Pablo was starting to hint at this as he was talking. It's, it is difficult to do in a small building, which I think is why the the code is written in the way that it is where that threshold, this twenty units where the group two requirement kicks in. And so, you know, I will just highlight again that the building is going to provide group one units, all the, for all the units, and we also have an elevator going up to the rooftop for the amenity space, so that will all be accessible as well. And I, so I think we're just talking about the level of accessibility here and and whether or not the the kind of financial cost of upgrading to a group two unit for one unit is, you know, appropriate for this project, given the, given the scale and the tight site.
That's helpful. So look, again, you know, I do appreciate that you guys did come to us with a That's helpful. Um, so look, again, you know, I do appreciate that you guys did uh come to us with a two bedroom mix, right? You you're right, you definitely could have tried to come with a bunch of studios and and one bedrooms, and that would have been extremely disappointing. So I do appreciate that you guys take, you know, a little bit of effort to to move this more towards something that is addressing, you know, the the family friendly shortage. I think we have. Um, you know, still a little bit disappointed. There's no way to work in a three bedroom, but understand that as well, and I think that's why. Uh, Vice Chair Buff and I are are kind of hoping that there's a little bit more flexibility on this subject, because to your point. You know, that cost is real, right? And it definitely would be expensive for someone to undertake on their own if they were to to modify this. Assuming they've got the ability to do so in the case of, say, a condoization, right? And so, you know, I do think you're highlighting a challenge that a a class of folks in Somerville have. And that's why we want to continue to advocate as this being a potential solution for improved diversity of housing stock for folks. So um, you know, it's definitely not something that I think would hold up the project in my view, but would love you guys to continue to to think about this. As as you guys look forward at more projects, and if you guys do pursue bigger and bigger projects, uh I'm gonna hold you to that. Trying to push beyond whatever the code is in the future, so. Uh, thanks for highlighting that. Um, the second thing, uh, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me hogging the floor a little bit longer. Was to talk a little bit about the vault in the front again. So I know that was a topic that we brought up as a point of concern, just because of the the. Uh, water table nearby and wanted to know if you guys have any other comments to add to that discussion at this point.
We don't. There's been no suggestion from um the engineers who we've been working with. That there would be an issue with the um below grade vaults.
Okay, well, then uh to the rest of the board, I would like to at least propose the idea of adding an amendment. Um, such that if there is a trigger in the vault in a material way, that it brings the project back to the board for review. Because I think that could fundamentally change this project in a big way, and I I'd just love to see it again at that point.
Without without being an architect or or engineer, can I ask you what that means?
So I think what I'm worried about. Yeah, and and look, I I'm not uh an expert here either. What I'd be worried about is when they bring that above ground. That it materially impacts the interaction of everything in the front there, whether it be the cafe or the entrance and exit. And egress with um the residential access, how it impacts, you know, their central theme of hi of spot. Uh, adding a spotlight to the revival mural, and I just want to make sure that if there's something that material, that we've got a chance to take a look at it again.
Is this, can I can I can I bring Steve in um real quick just to. Have staff's position on this. Um, Steve, who who is who is the case holder on this one, Steve? Is it you?
It's it's not me. Um, I believe it is um Kit Lester, um who I believe we have here.
Okay.
Yeah, there's Kit.
There we go. Hey, Kit, could I could I ask you what um what staff's position is as it relates to um? Michael's question and as you've spoken to other city departments on this.
Yes, just so I understand it is, Michael, are you asking um that if the transformer was not able to be underground? That it would have to come back to the board and you would want that in the decision? Sorry if I'm misunderstanding.
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. It's my understanding that. That would trigger a plan revision that would that staff would either determine to be a major amendment. Or to be de minimis if that were to happen either way.
Let's say this then, Michael, um if you if you're willing to take it, let's make a determination right now that this would not be a de minimis change. If if it needs to come back um so that we will have an opportunity to review and 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 revise. Any um conditions that we might have.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Also, if I may, I mean. Think fundamentally, the project doesn't work if that transformer has to be brought out. You know, in some kind of um. On this uh, you know, in the facade, like it, I mean, we're just, we're in the, we're in another, as a team, like we're in another realm. At that point, so I think that we're from the beginning, like, yeah, our our intent is to make that work. Because it's that's the way this project benefits like the community in the neighborhood. It it's just nuts to bring the transformer there, so we're fine with that.
I'm I'm anticipating Pablo that won't be the case. Um, I think what Michael's trying to do is make sure that we have the opportunity to. Take a look at it if 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 it doesn't work out.
Hundred percent.
I think we're all rooting for you, uh and making sure that everything works the way it's supposed to supposed to work. You guys have um. Always worked very, very well with with this board and in your project, so, you know, I I don't. I don't see you as somebody who's um, you know, trying to skirt um, you know, anything that's. Under the planning board's purview, so.
Yeah, and if I may, Mr. Chair, I definitely echo that. Uh, and as I highlighted the last me as well, I think you guys are trailblazing on. Uh, the gas availability for the restaurants here and everything, so really appreciate you guys bringing this project.
Michael, is that everything you wanted to raise on this is on this application?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Things are switching around. I see Luke.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Couldn't find my Simpsons hand. I just want to say, uh, I missed the last meeting, but watched the video um for for this project. And. Uh, pulling up my notes, um, three seventy nine Somerville Ave, so just want to say I I submitted the affidavit on that, so I can participate in the conversation. But I don't have anything else to add.
Much appreciated. Look, thank you. Jahan, do you have anything? Lynn, do you have anything on this? I I will say this, can we go back to the to the three options? I will be the only one. Who expresses a preference, apparently. You guys have said option one, I will tell you, I I'm, you know, I am not an architect. I I took some, you know, design courses in 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 college, you know, over at over at Gundall, and I was all well and good, and who cares? Um, but I will just tell you, I'm not a fan of option one. Um, I think the top looks kind of naked. And as a guy who's lost a lot of his hair, um looks somewhat similar. So I I I will be more in favor of options two or three, kind of either one. The other thing that I'm kind of noticing and I'm wondering, um, Paul, I think this is your screen. Can you bring us back to the? Bigger facades of options two and three?
Sure.
And 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 do all of them have the 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 piece on top of the window, the the articulated piece on top of the windows?
They do not. Option one and option three have that.
Okay, is there a reason option two didn't?
We liked it, the option two compositionally without it. Um, again, trying to really let the the minimalist massing here. Um, do the talking for the architecture as much as possible.
Yeah, I'm I'm not gonna get too. Deep into I had a I had a fight with a previous member about um. Window sizing at one point, and I'm not gonna do the same thing to you guys. Um. But I I always liked the idea of having a an articulated top of the window, but that's um, that's just me. I I personally like either two or three. I think it gives a little bit more definition to the top of the building. If the intent that you all had was to make it a little bit more minimal, I think two probably, you know, meets that more than three. So with, I think what you're stated. Um, preference for the design of this building is to be a little bit more minimal. Um, of those two, I'd I'd say, you know, option option two works better for me. Um, in what I would like to see as well as what you think your stated design for the um. For the building is, but anybody has anything that like to, I see Lynn. Lynn's like, take all the ornamentation away. Give me a box.
No, I I uh, I I uh, you know, as a ur- urban design professional. I actually preferred option one, um and I can tell you why. I like the articulation of the sandstone above the windows. Um, but I liked the subtlety of the lines up top. It, to me, it carried the same type of articulation that you see from the. From the from the ground up, like you've got that revival, they they pulled in the same coloring. And the same thickness from revival on that first floor, and then the windows actually are framed with very light. And then light, uh, you know, light framing, and then at the very top of the articulation kind of carries that through. Right? So to me, it flowed a little better. Um, I can't even tell you how much I'm in love with the blue railing. Um, and and that design element. So for me, Michael, I when they, that's why I didn't. You know, I I I think this is kind of outside the purview of the planning board. You would know that better, but to me, they liked option.
We do this all the time, but just, you know, I I don't want to get too too deep in, but we 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 do talk design quite a bit.
But since you went with option two or three and you're like, well, no one's gonna offer an opinion, it's like, oh, I got an opinion.
Go for it. That that's why, that's kind of why I said I was I was hoping somebody was gonna give me something. Um. Then the the only the only comment I have on your thought, and I I appreciate the the way you're looking at it, is, you know. Revival might not always exist as revival exists. So I'm looking at this as a, you know. Fifty years, sixty years, seventy year building, knowing that what's next door might might change substantially. In um any period of time.
Yeah, as I in addition additionally, architectural trends will will change, like we've all seen those. Terrible buildings of the nineteen seventies with no windows, right? And it's like, oh, take it down. Yeah, no, I I I agree with you, but uh, uh, you know, you, one can hope that whatever replaces revival. And uh, more importantly, whatever goes on the um, the left side as I I'm looking at it. Um, you know, we'll pick up, we'll pick up s- some of these ar- architectural features or or not. It's, you know, the more unique and variety, the the more interesting the walk, so. Um, anyway, I just.
Certainly not gonna vote against this project because my preferred little.
Right.
Top design isn't supported by you, Lynn. Um, yeah, I I think this is a great project. I don't want to hold you guys up too much. Uh, Pablo, yeah, sure.
I just wanted to throw a a a couple of quick things in. Um, I think in the rendering, the soldier course at the top is not showing. As well as well as it will in reality. I think that that, um, because check up one of we had as a team. Also, that context of or this conversation of a cap and kind of a hat on this, something, something that kind of terminated. But I think like, we all kind of followed Paul, this is like Paul's, uh, Paul put a lot into this from the beginning. And I think we could feel as a team outside of Paul, his reluctance to to us driving this kind of cap. Um, version, because I think Paul's vision from the beginning was this kind of this verticality. And so I think the soldier uh course kind of has this nice in between. It kind of creates a little bit of this like. You know, some termination, again, it's to everyone's opinion, but it's subtle. And just speaking with in terms of the windows, I think for sure we're gonna have those those stone lintels articulation on the windows. I think the other version we talked as a team that we're gonna have this kind of funky metal termination that I think won't look as good. I think that this version, again, wherever we land on the top, but this version of the lintels as as stone or precast. Is a lot more successful. So anyways, I just wanted to give that.
You sold me. You and Lynn, we're good, we're we're fine. Anybody else have a problem with option one? We can. Okay. I think we I think we're good to go. Anybody else have anything they would like to add? Okay. Thank you all for the indulgence.
Of course.
Okay, we have a couple of votes to take on this one, so let's go. Um, following public testimony review, this has been a materials and deliberation of the required considerations outlined by the ordinance. I move to approve of the conditions as outlined in the staff memorandum and discussed by the planning board. Uh, the site plan approval to develop a general building in the MR four district, seconded by Jahan. Steve, please.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
And Michael Capiano.
Aye. Following public testimony review, this a bit of materials and deliberation of the required considerations and findings outlined by the ordinance. I move to approve of the conditions in the staff memorandum and as discussed in the planning board. Uh, the request to establish a residential housing use in the MR four zoning district, seconded by Jahan. Steve, go.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
And Michael Capiano.
All right. Okay, uh, last one, following public testimony review of this minute materials and deliberation of the required considerations and findings. Outlined in the ordinance, I move to approve with conditions in the staff memorandum. And eh as discussed by the planning board, the request for a mechanical penthouse height exceeding the ten foot maximum. In the MR four district, seconded by Jahan. Steve.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
And Michael Capiano.
Hi. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thanks. Thanks, board members.
Have a great night. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm gonna bring up seventy four Middlesex next. I'm just, I'm going to step away for about thirty seconds. Um, so just let the applicant get uh squared away, let it pretty share this screen, and I shall be right back.
This is Steve Carey. I am promoting uh Darren Baird, uh the panelist, and then. Darren, once you're joined, if you could let me know who else on your team you'd like promoted.
Sure thing. Good evening. Uh, Anthony Galucchio should be promoted as well as Charles Spivey.
Great. All right, they both should be joining shortly.
I try to share. Is there if I try to set up a screen share now so that we're ready to roll when the chair returns?
Yep, that's fine. Um, you should have.
Yeah.
Yep, great.
Yep.
And with. Um, seventy four Middlesex, um, before we actually get started, you know what? Uh, Jahan, this is technically a new case. Can I have you read into the record the notice of public hearing, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Seventy four Middlesex Avenue, seventy four M Property Owner LLC seeks to install non-conforming wall signs in the Assembly Square Mixed Use. District ASMD per S C O seven point four point nine point B point. Which requires a special permit, Z P two five dash zero 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 seven six.
Could be applicant's representative and uh team if if any, yeah. Uh, team, if if any, yeah, introduce themselves and. Let's get going.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is Charles Spivey. I'm on the asset management team here at Gray Star. Um, we have Darren Baird here and Anthony Galucchio as well as counsel. Um, so today we are seeking special permit for the building identification signage. It's located on the north, south and west. Um, building entrances at seventy four Middlesex. Darren, if you want to go to the next slide, just give a quick kind of overview of seventy four M. Yeah, so seventy four M is a fifteen story, five hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot lab office building located in Assembly Square. Um, the building achieved certificate of occupant, or excuse me, uh, substantial completion in September of twenty twenty-four. And we are wrapping up final construction in the neighboring civic space currently. So I will turn it over to Darren, who will. Talk about the request today.
Great, thanks, Charles. Um, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. Um, we'll try to be brief here. Um, so we are here tonight to talk about um, three specific signage locations on the building. That are above the south, north, south and west entry doors. On the building and they are property identification signage signage, so. While they're wall signs, they don't technically comply with the wall signage requirements, which are really meant to be tenant driven. And occupant driven, right? But we think it's important wayfinding for the building. And so here is just in in all three of these signs are exactly, or all three of these property identification signs are the same. It's a seventy four M as shown on the screen here. This is above the south entry, which faces. The Kensington Avenue Civic Space, which abuts the property. And I'll I'll zoom out to a site plan that reorients folks. I know we've been here a couple of times, but uh, you guys see a lot of cases. Um. And so it's really a seventy four M with a circle adhered to. Um, you know, the glass above the doorways, and here's the south elevation view of it. This is also the south. Here's the civic space to to plan left is the civic space at Kensington. And there's the, there's the signage there above the door. On the north side, this is along McGrath Highway. Same thing, you know, five foot diameter circle with lettering that says seventy four M. And then on the west side at the bike room entrance. Um, same thing, five but you know, five foot diameter circle with seventy four M in the middle. As shown graphically on the site plan, here's the building, seventy four Middlesex, here's the Kensington Avenue. Um, civic space and the building signs are on the south side here. North side here and west side here. So. Here really, as 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 detailed in the staff memo in our application. There are a couple of, there are a handful of instances of nonconformity. First. You know, under article ten point eight of the of the ordinance. Um, the wall signs are really I address identification. They're not for a. A ground story business, and so that's technically a way that these wall signs don't comply with the letter of ten point eight. Um, they're also adhered to the glass curtain wall above the entry doors. And as a technical matter, wall signs are not supposed to be adhered to windows or any architectural element. Um. They also provide property information and don't contain contain a business name or logo, which technically. Is not permitted under ten point eight for wall signs. And they're located at the three separate entrances, so each tenant in a building is allowed to have one wall sign. Unless they're a corner tenant and then they can have two. Here, this isn't a tenant, right? This is building identification sign, so we technically don't aren't. You know, having signage in connection with a tenant. Um, and then finally.
Question. Good question.
Of course.
Do you already have signage up?
Signage is already up and it was installed because we thought it was wayfinding. It wasn't in property identification and not. Technically assigned, and so ISD pointed out that, yes, it's signage and they would like us to come in and try to get. You know, get relief necessary to be able to maintain it. So that's why we're here this evening. It was not, you know, had we. Had we realized it was signage when it was put up, we would have been here first, but now we're here, so. Um, yes, it is up um, in all three of those locations. Um, I think last but not least is the the diameter of the sign as a technical matter, the you know, the. The diameter of the circle that encircles the seventy four M lettering. Is five feet instead of four feet, which four feet is the maximums height of a wall sign under. Ten point eight, eleven A of the ordinance. Um, again, that's the extent of the circle. The lettering is much smaller than four feet, and so. We're hoping that, you know, that that the lettering is really what the focal point is and not the circle. So. That's what we're looking for from the standpoint of, you know. Changes, I don't want to see variances, but changes from what is otherwise required under ten point eight to be able to maintain the signage. We think that the signage is very helpful from a wayfinding perspective and fits with the aesthetics of the building and. You know, as as detailed in the staff memo, think that, you know, all of the finding is under fifteen point two point one. For the special, for a special permit as well as seven point four point nine, are findings that. The planning board can make favorably in order to allow for the special permit to be granted, so. I really don't have um, much else. These are the required findings. I go, know you guys are familiar with them. They're outlined in the staff memo. So rather than continue to go on, I guess we'll open it up to questions from the board. If you guys have any, happy to answer them. Um.
And that's it. The the only thing I would ask right now is if there is a representative from ISD or from staff who might be able to talk. About this application before I open it up, public testimony, um, because it is a public hearing and then the planning board can get.
Thank you.
Steve Carey here, um. I was the case planner for this. Uh, we don't have a representative from ISD um, here tonight. Um, but from what I understand about it, it's, you know, it's. As the applicant described it is is consistent, um, you know, they. There was their understanding that this wasn't, um, this is wayfinding on a wall sign, and as soon as. ISD flagged it as something requiring relief, they, you know, filed uh, filed their application accordingly.
And Steve, just so I'm clear, the only the only. Real condition that that staff recommends, that you recommend through staff, um, the administration is to make the sign four feet instead of five feet.
Right, um. Right, that's that's one of, there there's a few different sort of um, aspects of the signed ordinances is nonconforming with and. Um, I think that staff's recommendation is to go from the five feet to the four, because it seems like it would be the most um. Straightforward way to have a wall sign that's closer to um, compliance with the ordinance, um. Whereas sort of the the content and location where we're comfortable with.
Can I, eh, while while I have you, Steve, um, actually, you don't get to go anywhere tonight, um. How is this not a de minimis change?
I think that um, if it were. You know, just a conforming wall sign that weren't. Originally part of the um, original approval, we could look at that and say, this is, you know, this is clearly de minimis um, compared to. You know, in the scope of what was approved. Um, but because it's nonconform, because because it's something that requires a discretionary approval. Um, despite it being reasonably small in scope, it still is. Subject to the board's review because it's because of the discretionary permit and not like a revision to a. Um, you know, a previously approved plan.
Yeah. It gives me some context on how I'm looking at this then, so I appreciate that, Steve. Um, does anybody else on the board have any comments or questions of the applicant or staff before I open up to testimony? Okay. Seeing none, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open up this public hearing to testimony for anybody that wants to speak in support of this application. Please raise your hand, um, little button, and I'll call you. Anybody that wants to speak. Going once, going twice. Seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion of the public hearing. And open it up to anybody who wants to speak in opposition to the application. Going once, going twice. Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to members of the board. Um. Anybody have anything that they would like to address? I see Luke.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just confirming the back and forth you. Uh, you and the team had just a couple of minutes ago that the signage is already up, right? The the language. And our agenda talks about it as a future thing, but that's just the sort of legalese of the agenda. That. And and to me, I'm asking because this does feel somewhat material if it. On the margin. You know, I guess going to four feet would be better, but if it's already up, it does feel to me like it's so minor. Uh, I don't have a major concern with it staying. Um, so I see some heads nodding, so the signs are up.
It's 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 from from what the applicant said, the 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 stuff's already on the building.
Yeah. You know, it's just hard. Okay, thank you, yeah.
Darren, do you wanna? Mr. Chair, it it, if it was, if it would be helpful, because I I we didn't wanna. Hide the bouncing ball. You you hit it right away, Mr. Chair and and Luke, uh, member Schuster. They are up, they are affixed. Um. If it was a matter of reducing. We would, although I would say because they're wayfinding. Um, we think they're the appropriate sign. It's actually as Darren. Attorney Baird said, it's just a circle that goes outside the four feet. Um, but as you know. If you've, if if you've been, if you've pulled up to one of those blocks, it it is the way to distinguish. That building, and we think it's helpful to assembly in general to have the address identified, but. Um, so I can't say we we would easily make them smaller if they weren't affixed. But because they're not. Uh, it makes it a lot more challenging for us to change the design and we're, we would appreciate. Um, consideration from the board. Obviously, Gray Stars worked hard to get the building up and we're hoping to get it. Occupied, but um, and we apologize that 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 it came in this way, but it they are up and affixed already.
Again, that's that's helpful. One final question for me. Is um, a- again, I'm inclined to just think all of it's okay as is, but I am curious. Could the circle just come down? And is that one of the options on the table, keeping the seventy four M or whatever, and the circle comes down and then all of a sudden it's complying on the size front?
So within the vestibule, there is hardware that kind of backlights the sign, um, that it's the same diameter as the existing circle, so. Yeah, we could take the the window vinyl off, um, but that kind of design intent would would have to be reworked.
Okay. That's all for me, thanks.
It's to me, originally, I was like, oh, God, somebody did something they weren't supposed to do, and now they're coming for forgiveness instead of permission. What the hell are we doing? And then I'm like, okay, the circle is a few inches too big. And am I really going to hold your feet to the fire for having a circle that's slightly too big? And that's to me silly. Um, I I actually in. Looking at this now, I think this probably should have been a a de minimis. Um, thing that shouldn't have come before the board, but it it is something that did come before the board. I. I don't care. Um. You guys are fine i- in my book. This is, you know, a little bit silly and looking at the window based on this graphic. A smaller sign would have looked weird on that window, um. So, yeah, yeah, fine by me. Okay. Anybody else?
Uh, I agree with you, M- Michael. I also think, you know, the. Boston Globe has just done a story that highlighted this building, like lab, uh, lab buildings are. Underutilized. I really would like to. You know, support um, these guys to get tenants versus fussing with signs, so I agree with you, Michael.
Case of the oversized sign. Um, okay, following public testimony review of the submitted materials and deliberations of the required considerations and findings outlined by the ordinance. I move to approve, um. The staff memorandum, but as modified to allow this five foot circle, uh, because the staff memorandum recommends a four foot. Uh, diameter, um, so we're we're, the planning board, I think, is is uniform in saying we don't. Need you to modify the the shape of the sign, um. Request to install or or keep installed, nonconforming wall signs in the Assembly Square Mixed Use District. Seconded by Jahan, Steve.
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
And Michael Capiano.
Hi, um, I just wanna say, if if. The modification that you had already put in with a resign or something else, that was so different from what we had permitted, uh. We might have looked at this differently. There is a, there is a building that I still want to rip the brick facade off of, um. I won't tell you which building. Staff knows which one it is, um, but this is, this is not that, so.
We agree with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and Board. Have a good rest of the summer. We appreciate it.
Thank you. You as well. Okay, uh, last up is. Three Craigie Street slash six seventy-five Somerville Avenue, um, as the applicant team are getting unmuted and shared. I will ask Jahan to read into the record that notice of public here.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Three Craigie Street, six seventy-five Somerville Avenue, six seventy-five Somerville LLC seeks to develop a general. Building in the MR three zoning district, which requires a site plan approval, Z P two five. Dash zero 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 one six. Six seventy-five Somerville LLC seeks to establish a residential house use in the MR three zoning district, which requires a special permit. Z P two five dash zero 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 one seven. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and do we have applicant team and everybody who can be. Shared, unmuted, all the good stuff.
This is Steve Carey. I just promoted Adam Dash to panelist. And Adam, if there's anyone else from your team that I should promote, please let me know.
Indeed, sir. Uh, Alexander Varelas, uh, Sylvia Sheldon and Paxton Sheldon, they may be on one together or not. Uh, Christian Umania. Uh, and Krista Lucas.
Great.
There we go.
Think I've got everyone.
While we're doing all of that, um, attorney Adam Dash representing six seventy-five Somerville LLC. Who's the applicant owner of the property. Alexander Varelas is here from six seventy-five Somerville LLC. Uh, Sylvia Ilya Sheldon and Paxton Sheldon, the architects from BOS Urban Architecture. Christian Umania is from Offshoots, who's our landscape architecture firm, and Krista Lucas from Howard Stein Hudson, the traffic engineer is also here. So. What we'd like to do here, if we could um, give Sylvia um, the opportunity to share slides, that would be fantastic. So, uh, while we're doing that, uh, we are here tonight regarding proposed redevelopment of the property known as. Six seventy-five Somerville Avenue and three Craigie Street as it sits on the corner. This, there you go. This is the gas station and auto body shop, auto shop, I'm sorry, shown in the photograph there. Which is at that corner, and it's been in the Varelas family for generations. Um, this is near Porter Square. Uh, the. The proposal is to demolish the existing structures and build a new three-story fourteen-unit uh, building with commercial space on the first floor. Uh, no car parking is being proposed and no car parking is required. Um, the applicant, if we go to the next slide, Sylvia. Uh, the applicant is seeking, um, there goes a summary of the project in words. The applicant is seeking site plan approval to construct a three-story general building in the MR three zone. And a special permit for the residential housing use in the MR three zone. That's the only relief we're seeking. We're gonna be taking up both of those relief requests together tonight for you. And our expert team will now show you the project details. I'll turn it over to Sylvia.
There we go. Can you hear me? Excellent, and just wanna double check that you're seeing a full slideshow and no uh, comments or notes.
Right now, we're still seeing the project narrative.
That's right. Perfect. Well, uh, good evening, board members, uh, check upon our neighbors. Thank you for letting us show this project. Like Adam was saying, I'm just gonna maybe reiterate. Some of the features. We are developing a three-story all electrical mixed-use general building featuring commercial space on the ground floor, rental housing units. Uh, on the ground are ADA and the upper floors, uh, situated within MR three zoning district. Project of the year to all criteria specified in the Somerville zoning ordinance, including fourteen rental units. To contribute to Somerville housing. To contribute to Somerville Housing Stock, we offer seven two-bedroom units, one and five one-bedroom units and two studios with two of these units designated as affordable according to Somerville zoning ordinance.
So can I introduce you, uh, interrupt you real quick? Uh, which two, if you know, are gonna be designated as affordable?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're, um, that's a matter we're gonna be discussing with the Housing Division. I believe there's a condition to that effect, but you can propose requiring us to work that out. There there are going to be two units of some mix or match, and we'll have that discussion if and when we get approved.
Sure.
So moving to our sustainability narrative, the project, again, no motor vehicle pa- parking. Uh, it will not add to traffic. It will not promote adding fossil fuel burning vehicles to the city. Uh, we are uh, filling in all the existing curb cuts and that will increase pedestrian safety. The project will comply with green score requirements. We will remove the current motor vehicle used on the site. The orientation of the building uh, will allow for uh, better cross ventilation of the units. The project is pursuing a HER certification for projects under twelve thousand square feet of residential to meet the standards of the Specialized Energy Code and will promote the goals of Somerville Pollinator Action Plan with pollinator safe planting. So just a quick overview of the site, located at the corner of Craigie and Somerville Lab. The site is served uh, by two bus lines, eighty-three and eighty-seven. We are within the half-mile uh, radius to Porter Square. This is uh, again, that corner, we're gonna be walking a little bit to the right to see uh, this, uh, the, our abouter to four Everson Street side. You're gonna notice there is a fire escape. There's a prescriptive easement to accommodate this fire escape. Going around, this is the back of the lot, a budding five-seven Craigie Street. And now we're gonna be flying a little bit, looking uh, from above, all four sides, this is to the north, to the east, to the south and the west. You can see here the car wash across the street. So the development is again, not asking for any zoning relief. It is by right and complies with all our zoning requirements. We can come back to these slides if needed later on. Uh, the corner is a corner lot, right? So we have two fronts, a primary front on Somerville Lab and a secondary front on Craigie Street. So it has three sides and one rear. Uh, we have a ten-foot setback, a budding NR, and a twenty-foot rear setback, a budding NR. And we have a zero-site setback, budding uh, MR3. But we will provide a minimum setback required for our neighbors' fire escape and egress. This is the proposed demolition of the structure. That's one-story building that needs to be dev- uh, demolished. There will be some concrete curbs that also need to be demolished and oning uh, and a roof overhang with a concrete base, columns, and and the sign also will be demolished. So on to the proposed design. We are developing a walk-up housing with duplexes and flats. Uh, again, by rights, subject to special permit site plan approval, no unit parking, transit area, commercial space on Somerville Lab, cross ventilation uh, for better living and units, no elevator and centerized units. Overall, we are looking at fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-nine square feet of development, where eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine gross square feet of residential with two thousand seven hundred and ten gross square feet of commercial, that yields fourteen units, about eighty-three percent efficient. And the mix that we have, like I said before, sorry, I'm repeating so much, five one-bedrooms, seven two-bedrooms, two studios, two uh, acc- uh, accessible units, um, which are tier one and tier two. Again, but like Adam said, this is maybe uh, still uh, de- debated, but then we'll have point eight remainder uh, on the table. All right, so we organized these slides to sort of look at first all of the the ground plane um, features and and the the design has. So here in the slide, you're gonna see the main access points. On Craigie Street is the main residential access uh, for uh, the units. On Somerville Lab, there's a main commercial access. And there is also a secondary residential pedestrian access uh, right next to our our neighbors in Everson. And that takes you to a secondary uh, access on the back. There is going to be a transformer lo- in this location, right here, the transformer. Uh, we had received a preliminary log letter and we have started conversation with Eversource, our engineer. I've notified that we need a fifty KDA transformer, and this is the proposed location. The unit will be screened and will open air. Now we're gonna talk about trash. Uh, during neighborhood meeting one and two, there were several comments about trash location. How will trash be handled and how, and then in secondary meeting was how uh, um, have you thought about putting the trash on Craigie Street? And we really wanna talk to that point directly, you know, Alex. Direct us to study a sketch that was proposed by our, the neighbors of two-four Everson, depicting their desired location of a two-yard container uh, for trash. Uh, basically a trash room uh, on the Craigie side. The image shows the area proposed uh, by that sketch in red. Uh, the issue, and this will have to have a curb cut, right, to access and a roll uh, a roll-up door to access it. The issues we encountered with this idea were that our commercial space depth will be reduced beyond what's allowed, which is a thirty-foot depth minimum. And the rolling dumpster will require a curb cut, not on, and that will not allow us to infill the existing curb cut that's on Craigie Street. So that will reduce, uh, you know, further reducing the possibilities of of improving the street parking. Uh, and it will also, basically, it wouldn't allow us to put the planter and will reduce our green score. Uh, again, it will require an A-by-A roll-up door right next to a residential entry. And per UDC comments, this was really frowned upon. Um, so after looking at all these uh, options are, you know, approved location for uh, the trash is on the east side towards that second entry. There are two zones in green, highlighted in green. One zone is almost like built into the building itself, screen and cover trash area right here at the bottom. At the top, there's a screen and cover recycling area. And this is really the the option that yields the most functionality and flexibility. And it's been approved by the UDC. We are also looking into that exterior uh, recycling area. Uh, we're looking at enclosures that uh, systems, we're looking into that. Hopefully, uh, you know, we can afford them uh, that are rust and rat-proof, so that they're not just bins. So we're looking into that idea. And I'm gonna hand it uh, to Krista to talk about curb cut changes and bike parking.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm Krista Lucas. I'm a senior transportation engineer with Howard Stein Hudson. Uh, we pr- um, we submitted the transportation access plan to Mobility Division as required for the project. As Sylvia mentioned, no vehicle pa- parking will be provided on the project site. Um, it is residential units and the location itself is very well-suited uh, for commuting. It's adjacent to uh, the eighty-three and the eighty-seven MBTA bus lines, and it's less than half a mile or less than a ten-minute walk uh, to Porter Square Station, um, which hopefully you all know has uh, both the MBTA red line as well as commuter rail services and additional bus lines. So as this slide shows, uh, three curb cuts are gonna be closed, one on Craigie Street. That's that that up and down one uh, to on the left side um, and two on the Somerville Avenue. So those are the ones on the bottom right uh, and left. So so three curb cuts are being closed. Again, no vehicle access here. And so all of these can be closed and there won't be any curb cuts provided. Uh, bike parking, next slide. Excellent. Sylvia's ahead. Uh, bike car parking complies with Somerville zoning ordinance. The project is constructing a bike room. Uh, that's that that top right box is pointing uh, to that that fourteen uh, space bike room. Those are covered and secured for residents with access from the lobby. And then there is a another set of two covered racks uh, for uh, for visitors. And those are in that that middleie box um, pointed out. And I don't know if Sil- Sylvia, I don't know if you can actually, I don't know if you can, if you can in fact gesture through those with the mouse. Um, but so we have uh, two co- two covered racks, which is for four spaces for visitors um, in that courtyard. And then on the bottom uh, along Somerville Ave, there's another rack for another two spaces. So again, it's six visitor spaces uh, and fourteen um, permanence, permanent covered indoor spaces for residents. So the project is exceeding the minimum requirements uh, for bike parking. Uh, and now I'm gonna pass it back to Sylvia. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. So on to other uh, site uh, issues. We talk, we wanna talk about visibility from the corner. We know visibility uh, is very important at the corner, so we're proposing a glazed corner to minimize uh, visual obstructions. Here is a view looking through that corner. And we're on Craigie Street going towards Somerville Ave. So um, here in this diagram, we are showing the open common space areas uh, where we are providing planting, seating and visual lighting. And then also here are the ground floor units, private outdoor amenities. So they have their own little yards. Another comment from UDC was uh, about adding a gate or fence uh, behind the abouter's fire escape access to secure the site. In this diagram, you see a dashed blue line. This is the line where we are in uh, planning to install this type of fence. I'm gonna blow that up a little bit so you can see it in more detail. The fence will be located within our property line on a curb uh, that is beyond the fire escape to maintain access to uh, our neighbors who have an easement. And this is a kind of uh, before and after view to sort of get a sense of the quality of that space. I'm gonna blow that up a little bit more. You're gonna see the fencing beyond. This is all kind of blending in with the material of the sidewalk. And so there's no obstruction. And uh, to clarify, triple clarify, this is a pedestrian walkway. There is no, there is, this is just to access the second residential entry and to maintain the egress to Somerville Ave from uh, from our neighbors' fire escape. And because it came up in uh, our neighborhood meeting number two, we just wanna reinforce that there is no vehicular access to this space. Uh, the curb cut, as shown here, will be filled. All right, so moving on to uh, not the site, but the building uh, in green here, you see uh, the residential units in the back. There's two studios and in teal, there's one bedroom. In purple is the commercial space. In gray is the common interior lobby. Uh, the the uh, triangle show the access to stairs and units on the ground floor. You take both stairs up to a common terrace. And from that common terrace, you have access to, in green, two-bedroom duplexes and in teal, one-bedroom units from the terrace. And then from, you know, there's a discreet entry for the third-floor unit. Uh, again, the greens is a duplex unit, so they're moving internally. And in teal, you have the access to the one-bedroom units, which are located on the third floor. Now let's look at mass- massing and facade. So the massing uh, in this corner lot is broken into two blocks. Uh, this allows us to provide northern and southern exposure to all units for better light and for air circulation. At the bottom, um, you will see that the massing retracts, creating a recess that signals the residential entry that is now covered by the massing above. Um, there's this continuous commercial space that allows flexibility and that really nice corner presence. Uh, we also have a green roof. I'm gonna keep moving on. Our primary material is brick, uh, is a face brick uh, in copper tone. Uh, and it has two color accents uh, that are going to be uh, jade and coral, to match as the brick. These are fiber cement panel accents. Here we have an elevation, it's a primary elevation. And as you can see, we're playing with the detail of the brick. Uh, we we like to, you know, we're organizing the massing in this grid, but we're playing with the movement, the ins and the outs of the bay to provide privacy uh, to the balconies and to create also interest on Somerville Ave. The color that we're using, this sort of um, green, monster green, I guess, creates a focal point. Uh, and you can kind of start to see here the planter that we're we're loving this planter, which provides us with green score, but also creates a beautiful bench as he approaches the corners. It's a little bit of a social space as well. Uh, this is the Craigie Street approach, going into Somerville Ave. Uh, the windows are varied, create a nice articulation. And the uh, the window frames also provide a subtle color, uh, the pop-up color. Uh, in terms of signage, here's a strategy for awning and signage on the primary facade. It is, I'm gonna move to this view. The awning is a thin metal extrusion, as if you extruded the molyan out. It is supported by the balcony above. We think that locating the signage to the front makes it a little bit more visible. So you can see the detail on the brick here, corbeling up. Uh, that adds texture and adds detail to the facade as you get close to it. The ins and outs, again, provide privacy. They provide structural continuity from top to bottom, and they provide shading. Another um, important uh, aspect is uh, contextual uh, to our building is, you know, there's the question of sound and noise. Um, our one in meeting uh, number one, for the neighborhood meeting number one, the owner of the car wash across Somerville Ave said that he was supportive of the project, but was concerned about residents in the new building complaining about having a twenty-four-hour car wash across the street. Counselor Evan Campan asked whether the units could be soundproof in some ways, such as by using special windows. So we made this diagram just to show that there is not just a car wash. It is also the existing MBTA commuter rail, both produce la- sound that is, you know, loud, sixty decibels for the car wash, but eighty-five for the commuter rail. The commuter rail is a, is a short thirty-second sound. The car wash, we estimate about half an hour of constant sound. A sound trouble towards our building, it diminish a little bit. Uh, so we estimate that an eighty-five ends up being a sixty-five decibel, a sixty decibel ends up being a, almost like a forty decibel when it hits the facade. So how do we counteract that? We're gonna have triple paint glazing in the bedroom areas that has an STC of thirty-seven that will reduce the, you know, the sound to two-point-three decibels for the thirty-minute uh, car wash sound. And and it will reduce it to twenty-eight decibels for the for the MBTA sound. On top of that, we're gonna follow best practices for acoustic design, right? So like acoustic caulking, sound insulation uh, in our wall assemblies and sound-reducing curtains could be another strategy. Another uh, UDC comment we wanna address today was to review the structure and the thickness of the balcony elements, ensure that the detailing comes across and review how the windows interact with the flooring due to the thickness of the wood construction. I think our logic is that this grid reads very well, that, you know, there would be three equal horizontal bands. The design intent is that spandle condition be equal across all floors. It would be about six brick courses, sixteen, sixteen inches is the current assumption to accommodate the structure insulation and floor assemblies. If additional space is needed, uh, the detail will work properly and the logic of equal, equal, equal will be respected. And also here, you see a little bit of like uh, our sun uh, daylighting strategy. Okay, so now I'm gonna move to landscape and Christian is gonna present our landscape. And I'll, Christian, you gotta tell me next slide and I'll.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. Uh, Christian Umania, everyone from Offshoots. Uh, starting at the ground level plan, uh, you know, our main goal here was to really create a nice outdoor communal space and amenity. So we're showing this courtyard on the northeast back corner uh, with cafe-style seating and catenary lighting uh, and and being framed by uh, by planting on the building side and on the property line side as well. Um, this area also includes, um, as as Krista mentioned, uh, the outdoor bike parking as well as enclosed trash areas, fully enclosed, just to limit odor and make sure to reduce rodent activity. Along plan north, showing the three private patio spaces for the ground level units with low fences between them to divide each of those spaces. Along Craigie Street, we're showing that planter along the facade of the building is really an opportunity to bring greenery to the streetscape. And then on the Somerville Ave side, just to echo what Sylvia said, making sure to provide the secondary pedestrian access while maintaining safe and clear access to the abutters fire escape. On the left are images showing the material choices, cast and placed concrete paving along the streetscape to match Somerville standards. And then permeable unit pavers and piece-stone paving in the areas along the back of the building. On the next slide, you'll see some precedent images that give you a sense of these two main spaces. You know, simple movable furniture in the courtyard to create a flexible, flexible space for residents. And this concept of the back patio is being simple piece-stone paving with paving within, just as a low maintenance way to create a green buffer without ground cover planting that we hope deters, you know, creating spaces for rodents to nest in these areas. On the next slide, on level two, there is a terrace that serves as circulation connecting the units, but also gives us the opportunity to create both private and communal spaces up here. So we're strategically using freestanding planters to create some visual separation between some of the private patio spaces created by the architecture and giving us the opportunity to have some communal tables out there as well along the railing on the north and east side of the terrace. On the next slide, you know, throughout this whole process, we take into account, you know, the specifics of the site in terms of sun exposure, groundwater flow and prevailing seasonal winds. And in particular, this helps us inform our plant decisions to make sure that they're well adapted to these micro conditions and ensure maintenance and longevity. So, you know, on the next slide, we'll see that this project sits within a dense neighborhood. So every bit of planting is important. And our office recently authored the Somerville Pollinator Action Plan. So we're excited to have all of our planting strategies, follow those guidelines and prioritize native plants that are actively supporting pollinator species and ecological diversity. And, you know, Offshoots in general, as a practice, is always thinking about performance, especially in these urban conditions. So as we do in a lot of our projects, where we've been sure to include a selection of tree species that have been shown to trap airborne pollutants as well as deep-rooted tree species that provide long-term improvements to soil and groundwater qualities by sequestering and breaking down pollutants. So going back to that ground level plan, our planting strategy here includes a basswood at the northeast corner of the property, just to act as a canopy tree. And along those back patios, showing Canadian service berry for ornamental accents. And throughout that portion of the site, mixing quaking aspens and hybrid poplars, which are some of those species that have been shown to pull pollutants and from the ground and the air along that northern, both to be productive and act as a seasonal buffer. We're also showing in that area, Virginia creeper along the rear wall, just to add a vertical, vertical greening element. And we've also added a black tupelo street tree on Somerville Ave, a species that's resilient, performs well in a streetscape condition. And at the main entrance and along the courtyard edge, we're showing a mix of perennial species. That was right, Sylvia, on the next slide. Nope, you're fine. And this is, you know, one of our selections from the Pollinator Action Plan and, you know, chosen to, you know, have great seasonal interest. And, you know, includes false indigo, cluster mountain man, swamp milkweed, just to name a few. And on the second level, we're showing a selection of shade tolerant pollinator plant species, which will be planted in those freestanding planters just to make sure that this becomes a, you know, a low maintenance space that can perform well and has serve an ecological benefit up there. On the roof level, our, the planting strategy that we're showing is using sedum cuttings mixed with native plug plantings to create this ecological green roof that has seasonal interest and creates a biodiverse planting palette that goes, you know, beyond the green carpet of a single species, but really can begin to be a productive, you know, a productive landscape on a portion of the site that's usually very passive. And, you know, to wrap this up, the material selection of the design have allowed us to meet the target green score for MR3. So ensuring that, you know, all of these developments would bring ecological benefit and resilience to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. So this proposal, Mr. Chair, is to wrap up, meets the requirements for site plan approval for the building and special permit for the residential use because this is an allowed building type in the MR3 zone. The project meets the goals of both the Summer Vision 2040 Plan and the MR3 Zone as stated in the Summerville Zoning Ordinance, since it will facilitate transit-oriented neighborhood infill development, create a place to live, work and play, ensure properties can adapt to meet the needs of residents, provide badly needed housing, including two affordable units, fit in with the neighborhood, which is a mix of residential, commercial and mixed-use structures of varying shapes and sizes. Is the same number of stories as the existing structure on the side of it along Somerville Avenue. I will remove an automotive use and replace it with housing and first-floor commercial space as befits the MR3 zone. The project is sustainable, as the experts have explained. Unlike the existing automotive use, the project will reduce motor vehicle trips by having no parking whatsoever on site. The currently entirely paved lot will have landscaping and extensive green roof, which will help mitigate the heat island effect. The project is dimensionally fully compliant with the Somerville Zoning Ordinance for a general building in the MR3 zone and no variances are being requested or required. The project has been long owned and operated by the Varellis family and Alex is here tonight. The family seeking to redevelop their property to meet Somerville's changing needs and goals while respecting the abutter, particularly the abutter with the fire escape on the side in order to keep that emergency egress along their property and providing sound attenuation regarding the train, the street and the car wash noise as described. So in all, the relief sought is the minimum relief necessary for a mixed-use building in the MR3 zone. An applicant requests that this board grant the site plan approval and special permit being sought. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Dash and applicant team. I do have a couple of comments and questions, but I'm going to hold off until we take some public testimony. But before we do that, I just want to make sure if there's anybody on the planning board that wants to ask any questions of the applicant or his staff before we do that. Yeah.
Yeah, Michael, and if you want me to hold off on this, I will. But the current existing use is a gas station. And the gas station will have underground storage tanks. And there has been no mention of how those tanks are going to be removed and any kind of brownfield phase one testing. So I love the pollinator, et cetera, et cetera. But if we're going to be green, we should make sure that we're not building on top of a brownfield site. So if the team could clarify this, or Michael, if you think we should pump this to a later discussion, I'm happy to hold off on this.
We're happy to address it now if you'd like, because I guess Alex has done this work and actually has had the tanks pulled. Alex, you want to describe what your family has done?
Yeah, that's right. So in 2018, we had the tanks removed with an LSP on site. All tanks, product pipes, dispensers were pulled out as well as an in-ground hydraulic lift. The LSP sampled all the soil around those potential contributors and all the soil was clean. And we have a report to that effect.
And there's also a condition to provide that, but we already have it. But we'll provide that as part of the condition if and when we get approved.
Thank you.
That's great. Lynn, that satisfies your concern, huh?
Oh, no, I have more, but that seemed like, that seemed like a good clarification going into public comment because if I was a member of public, I would have that question. So that's why I asked it now.
Nobody likes green on top of brown. Who else? Before we move forward. What I'd like to do now is open this up to public testimony. For anybody that wants to speak in support of the application, please raise your hand. And I'm calling you in the order that I saw you. The first person that I saw was Crystal Huff. So as a reminder, for anybody that wants to testify, please give your name and address for the record.
This is Steve Carey. I'm unmuting Crystal Huff. Crystal, you'll just need to unmute on your end.
Hello, everyone. The city solicitor said that because I have a stalker, I can give my ward rather than my specific address. And I have done so in other public hearings. My ward is Ward Five. I hope that's, it looks like that's okay. I, I live in this area and that's probably an odd thing to say, having just said the previous. But I, I think it's important that people nearby come out and say how they're thinking about something that's going to be near them. I am primarily in support of this project. I love the idea of there not being a parking lot there in that site. I love the fact that there's going to be a ton of housing in this project if it moves forward. I have personally eaten Canadian service berry, so they are edible FYI by humans, but they're not just decorative. And they're a native, which is great. I'm not worried about the trash. I'm not worried about the sound from the car wash, the train, et cetera. I, I do want to put a note in that because this is currently zoned for MR3, it can only be three stories tall and is not required to have an elevator. And we have very little housing in Somerville that is elevator accessible, wheelchair accessible, et cetera. There are two units in this that looks like they're going to be wheelchair accessible, which is great. We have tiny amounts of affordable, accessible housing. And I would just put a note in for like, can at least one of the accessible units be also designated affordable? Like, I know that can't be answered during this hearing, but I want to put that note in, or that can't be answered to me directly anyway. I also wanted to put a note in that people who use wheelchairs also sometimes use bikes. And it might be good to take a look at the bike parking room and consult with someone who's a wheelchair user and a bicyclist and see about an adaptive bike parking option to make that accessibility more complete. I do see a lot in this plan that's to love in terms of trying to plan for all bunch of needs and hopes. But I did want to put that out there as well. And I, I really appreciate this, this project, like trying to work with the neighbors with a lot of diverse comments. So thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person that I saw on my list was Lisa Bedford.
This is Steve Carey. Lisa, I believe you've been unmuted on our end. You just need to unmute on your end.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I live at 1012 Ibbetson, so abutting this property right on the corner there. Just want to say I really love this design. They've really put in all of the comments from the neighborhood. And I think it would be a great upgrade, no offense, Alex, to your business. We all love it, but this is going to be a great addition to the neighborhood. So thanks for putting all this effort in.
Thank you very much. The next person that I see on my list is Aaron Weber. So if Aaron can please be unmuted.
Aaron, I believe you've been unmuted. You just need to unmute on your end.
Hi, my name is Aaron Weber. I live at 32 Summit Avenue. Obviously, I'm here in support of this project. I've got a couple of reasons. One of them is, you know, a lot of times when we see development proposals, we're concerned that they're by very large international developers, that they're too big, that they're out of scale. Here we are with a transit-oriented, low-parking, modest-sized project from a local family. I think this is exactly in the sweet spot for redevelopment, especially because it moves from automotive uses to housing, to transit-oriented housing. It really seems like very much in line with the city's goals of emphasizing this sort of project as the sort of project that it wants to see. So thank you very much for your time. I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, thank you very much. Does anybody else want to speak in support of the application? Please raise your hand. Going once, going twice, seeing none. I will open up the public testimony for anybody that wants to speak in opposition to the application or express concern. Please raise your hand. Let's see, Kenneth Lightner.
Kenneth, you've been unmuted on our end. You just need to unmute on your end.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Kenneth Lightner for the abutters at 669 Somerville Avenue, Dawn in Laody.
Sixty-five.
Six. Six seventy-five, I'm sorry. The abutters to the right, to the east of the project. And I have to speak to the impact that it's having on their property. We went through everything that you have. With the new building going up, they had windows to the side. They are going to generally lose their sight and the general airflow on that side of their building. And we go, went over the landscaping plans. There's no landscaping buffering this alleyway going down. It's just a causeway going down. And I imagine it's only for the purpose of getting the barrels down there and people coming up with bikes. It's been spoken, the architect first said that we have a prescriptive easement for the fire escape, which I would suggest is correct, so they had to keep that area open for the fire escape. But we are getting, to take a, on motor term, we're at the tail end of this. We're getting all the trashes located closest to our building, the recyclables and all the trash bins. There are 14 units and probably two commercial units. And how are they going to bring the trash down? You know, it's going to, it's going to come down between my client's building. It's not going to affect these, there are the residential units. And it's going to come down quite frequently. And there's going to be quite a bit of trash, given the number of units. So we see that as a downside to the overall design. And, you know, we talked about putting it on the other side. They don't necessarily have to have a rollout. They could configure it to put it out on the Craigie Street side. But we're bearing the burden of all the trash coming down. We're losing some light and air there. They didn't talk about in the plans, the snow removal plan. Where are they going to put the snow? You know, and what type of, in what type of water prevention are they going to have against my client's building when they pave there? Are they going to put any sort of berm or buffer? I think it's things that have to be looked at. The slightly entrances are going to be on Craigie and Broadway. But everything, you know, the trash and the bicycles and the snow storage is all going to be on my client's side of the building. And we asked for some real consideration. I think it's a weighty matter. We're the closest abutter to them. And we, we're going to bear the burden of all of the trash, the traffic, the bicycles, trash removal coming up. And possibly the water flow. There was no, nothing, you know, we don't know if we're going to have any water problems coming down. Cause there, there isn't, it is pitched down coming that way. Well, yeah, and we, potentially deliveries to, on the side door to the two businesses coming up that, that private way. So I think we bear all the burden of that. Uh, and I think it's unfair in that regard. The, you know, we, we don't have anything against development. We just think it should be configured in a different manner. None of the other butters are bearing this and, and really the residential units aren't. It's all, it's all, it's closest to our building. And so I want to pass that along.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anybody else that wants to testify in opposition to the application? Please raise your. Once, going twice, I will close that portion of the public hearing and open it up to the planning board for comments, um, questions of the applicant and of staff. Who would like to start? Nobody? Lynn? So I'll go. Okay, Lynn.
So uh, I found it. So I'm very, thank you, Alex, for um, uh, confirming that the underground storage tanks were removed and the soils were sampled and all were clean. So then I have to ask the landscape architect as to why tree plantings were selected that soaked up pollutants. So those two pieces of information felt like they were in a contradiction to me, right? It's like if everything came up clean, why are we selecting a plant mix that will specifically help remediate pollutants from the, from the ground? So that concerned, that concerned me a little bit.
You want to take that, Christian?
Yep, sorry. Um, yeah, absolutely. I think that's a, that's a great question, you know, in being a, a firm that practices in, in urban environments and that has done research in um, in phyto remediation of, of plants, it's something that we as a practice make sure to incorporate in all of our projects regardless of, of the site, just as really a way of ensuring that plantings are being productive uh, and, you know, not, not just being reactive to the sites, but being forward-thinking. And, you know, this is, this is something that um, ensures that any, any pollutants that may come from abutting properties, air particulate matter from abutting properties, um, groundwater, um, again, from, from the, the general area is is, is something that we're, we're thinking of um, in, in the future and is, is something that we, we like to incorporate. Again, not as um, not always thinking of it as a reactive measure, but more as a proactive measure to ensure that we're, we're specifying plans that are, that, that go beyond just meeting and fixing uh, the needs of one particular site, but creating really a network throughout, throughout the city. So that's our general approach um, in our, in our practice and, and the site is, is no different.
So thank you, thank you for that. If I can ask a follow-on question since, since you try to be kind of forward-thinking. So the site was, I'm guessing a hundred percent impervious cover existing, right? So you're putting new building on top of it. You're not changing the impervious cover at all. Um, that being said, this is still an opportunity to use um, particularly the landscaping to help mitigate the runoff coming from that um, impervious cover. Again, I, I'm not, I, I'm not upset. Um, you know, it's a hundred percent right now. It's going to be actually less than a hundred percent because you have a green roof. So my question is, can you use the ground plantings to further mitigate the runoff coming from the site? Um, have you thought about that at all?
Yep, absolutely. And we're, you know, we're excited in, in the plan that you're seeing now that the, the unit pavers and the planting areas are both permeable uh, on, on the ground plane. So, so basically what you're seeing in gray here, except for where we're showing concrete paving, all of that is uh, permeable pavers. So that where the cursor is highlighted now, that courtyard space is permeable pavers. Um, and then the piece stone in which uh, the, the tree planting is coming out of is also a permeable permeable material. So that entire area is, is working hard to uh, to infiltrate water that's on the site. And, you know, that's, that's something that we uh, you know, that, that we, that we're excited about getting as much water as we can into the ground rather than having it run off, um, run off the site and, and cause issues elsewhere.
Uh, Michael, can I ask what, can I ask, thank, thank you, Christian, so much. Can I ask one more question?
It's all here.
Okay, um, so love that it's fourteen units. Somebody's not muted.
Excuse me, somebody, somebody is speaking and they need to be muted? Who, who is not Lynn?
Thank you. And I think this goes to the transportation. So fourteen units, no parking, bike parking, um, love. Love all of that. So, but I do anticipate that there may be an uptick in uh, ride share pickup and drop-off. And have you all looked at potential um, like short-term parking, um, accessing the site for the, for the potential increase in, in ride shares, taxis, et cetera, um, coming in and out of the building and where that might be accommodated?
Maybe we'll, we'll take that and, and Krista could chime in if, if we're misspeaking. But I, but I think that's a great comics. I do, I would anticipate that as well. Um, right now, the city is retaining control of those curb cuts for their own metered parking. Now that metered parking is, um, we have some discussions with them in terms of move in and move out um, of, of taking those meters for temporary uh, move-in, move-out periods, but we haven't had any discussions about your comment, Lynn, which I, which I think is a good one. I don't think they're going to give us a drop-off, dedicated drop-off, but I think it is an issue. It's going to create some traffic on Craigie.
I think that has to, Michael, from my perspective, that issue should be addressed prior, prior to the permit being issued because if, if it's all going to be metered parking, chances are in that area, there's going to be uh, it's going to be filled. And so drop-off um, and pickup will then require double parking, which then will create um, backstopping. So, you know, uh, not that, you know what I'm, what I mean, if somebody's d- double parked. Not to mention, I know there's a bike path there, which I'm always on. Um, and that's also going to create some potential issues. So to me, this feels like an issue that, that fourteen units, no parking, love all aspects of it. There will be ride share. How will that be accommodated? Double parking doesn't seem to be the, the, the answer for that. The, those are, those are my um, my questions for now, Michael. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, Lynn, um, you definitely hit on a couple of things that I was thinking of as well. But I would like to, before I get going, I just have a couple of things that I was going to raise. Um, I wanted to see if my other fellow board members had anything that was like to ask. I'll go. Um, I had a couple of things. Generally, um, I'm very supportive of this building. I think it's a great-looking project. Um, I think it, as, as a lot of people have said, as, as Mr. Weber has said, it takes a um, a gas station, which, but in, in, in auto use, which by the way, I like that I, I have used um, to something that is um, something that the city needs. Uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's a well-meaning and good project um, generally. And uh, I'll kind of start with that. Um, some of the questions that I had, not concerns not so much of the, the issue. I think things, things that we can clarify and maybe make a little bit better are a few things. Some of which have been raised by, by other people, so I'll start with, with those. Um, the little alleyway between the two buildings, between yours and Ibbotson, there was a concern that um, was raised about trash. I was wondering if you can remind me how trash is going to be handled in your building, where it's going to be? Because um, I, I don't think it's, you know, fair to have a bunch of uh, trash bins ne- necessarily next to um, another residential use if, if at all possible. So I'm wondering if we might be able to revisit what your thoughts were on um, the trash situation with, with your building.
So just to resum- to summarize, there, there's two different locations and one was we are trying to remove any of the, let's say, more undesirable trash further away and put that actually in our building. And that's in the lower area, just to the right of the bike parking. Um, right now, we're the eighty gallon.
Yeah, they're the bigger ones, the ninety-five, ninety-six.
So rather individual rolling trash bins, similar to what, what our neighbor uses. And I think they store their trash kind of near our recycling right now and they wheel it out to Ibbotson. It's going to be the same exact idea as we have the bins in um, in the building here that have to be wheeled out through the gate and they're going to sit on Somerville Ave on trash day. Um, the recycling bin, we did move to the smaller area that's kind of it, it also enclosed and covered. Um, and, and that's kind of near the, the back end of the property here. So those five recycling bins would be, or six recycling bins will be kind of in, in the back area. Did that answer the question?
Uh, it, it, it did for me. Um, sure. So, so the next question that I had also had to do with some of the mobility issues that Lynn raised. I mean, look, let's, it's, it's interesting to know that the city is intending to make that metered parking. I don't know if, if I knew that, that's, that's, that's fine by me. Um, you know, the reality is, you know, Ubers and lifts and, and cabs are going to drop off, where they're going to drop off. And I, I, we've all been in them. I don't care where the designated drop-off spot is. They're going to, they're going to go where they're going to go. To the extent that we might be able to put them on um, on Craigie instead of, you know, double parking on Somerville Avenue, you know, that's uh, you know, I, I think a better option. And you only have fourteen units, so it's not going to be a massive amount of, of, of Ubers and lifts at any given point. As well as the fact that I know that there is a um, bike lane and we don't want to impede the um, the, the mobility of, of vehicles um, and bikes and, and things like that on Somerville Ave. Um, the consideration could be, see if we might be able to encourage people to drop off on Craigie or further up the street or whatever it might be. Knowing that, you know, Uber, Uber drivers are going to do what they're going to do. The, the, the other thought I had actually, and uh, this is our meeting when, when Amelia is not with us right now, but this is um, speaking in Amelia's um, level of concern is where um, loading might go for, for that commercial space. Uh, particularly in light of the other concerns that we just raised about, you know, the Uber and lifts. That's going to be a thirty-second in and out for fourteen units. This is going to um, take longer than that and, and impede um, multiple modes of transportation if it's done on Somerville Avenue. I'm wondering if we might be able to um, have some discussion on that. I see uh, Krista, but, but this is an open discussion.
I'm just, I'm just going to jump in um, for both of these, um, both Lynn, Lynn and I completely understand the, your concern, particularly with that bike lane and knowing you use that bike lane, which means you know that people who in fact double park tend to do it in bike lanes, um, which makes bicycling less safe. Um, but then in fact, you know, to take the road and this is an existing condition throughout Somerville um, and throughout all of our, all of our communities. Um, we have in fact, within the transportation access plan, we did in fact um, work with the city and mobility division um, to designate some of those meters during some of the day as loading um, and, and pickup drop-off. So those could be, um, and again, the, in Somerville, you have the option to pull a permit um, for our street parking, for a moving truck. Um, but like uh, some of the commercial neighbors uh, up and down uh, Somerville Ave, we tried to be consistent uh, with a, 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 within some of those meters are in fact, it's limited between eight and noon as delivery only. Um, and then, and then it becomes two-hour metered parking, which should help with, in fact, um, it, it will work. If nobody is loading there, then in fact, um, Ubers and lifts can be there. It is limited. It is between eight and noon. Um, which then makes those meters available during the peak times when meters are most apt to be used, um, which tends to be more midday. So we have in fact, worked with the, the mobility division to try to in fact, maximize how, how this can best work. Um, and then similarly, um, along Craigie Street is adding some additional, with closing those curb cuts, we add some additional residence part, residential permit parking. Um, but also hopefully, and it is, it is Somerville and parking is tight. Um, but when, when there are, when they are not being used, you can still always um, do active loading or unloading um, without a permit. So, um, so if there is a space available when, and you may have to drive a little farther down um, to do your drop-offs. Um, so, um, but anyway, but there is in fact, a designated loading um, spot, eight to noon, um, where those, where some of those meters are, as well as the meters, as well as additional spaces. Um, and new spaces with all of these cur- closed curb cuts. So hopefully that helps a bit.
It, it does. And that actually brings um, brings up one more question, which sometimes that's how this works. Um, Steve, we've got you, right?
Yes, I am here. Yes, I am here.
Okay, we, we have our usual condition where no parking is, is provided, no residential spaces will be, uh, no residential stickers are provided, right? That's a, that's included in our usual conditions. Okay.
I believe, I believe that's right. I, I would confirm with our, our case planner is Madison Anthony, who I believe is with us and probably can confirm whether that's in uh, in the staff memo.
I would note that, this Adam Dash, by the way, it is um, in, under the mobility condition number five.
I thought, I thought, I thought it, I thought I'd seen it. I just wanted to clarify because I only have one screen open and didn't want to toggle between a bunch of different tabs. Thank you. Um, two last points, uh, one question and one, one, one concern. Um, question is about the commercial space. What are you guys planning on doing? Do you, do you have a, do you have an idea of how it's going to be used? Uh, you know, from the renderings, it looked like it was very obviously pedestrian-friendly. Is it going to be a um, you know, cafe type of thing? What, what are you, what are you thinking of?
I'm not sure. We, we don't have a tenant. I, I don't know what, what, you know, when the building, if the building gets built, uh, if, should you be so kind as to approve it? And then we go and look for tenants. Um, it's a good location. There's a lot of um, foot traffic, certainly a lot of bike traffic. Um, right by Porter Square. And there are a lot of number of things that could go in there. Um,
I didn't, I didn't know if you had any like kind of preliminary discussions with, you know, because sometimes, sometimes as Adam, you know, we, we do see, oh yeah, we've, we've had discussions with, you know, these folks and hoping they might be able to come in. So I don't know if you had those kind of.
I don't know if Alex, you want to weigh in if you've had anything? I certainly am not aware of anything.
I don't mean to force your hand. I'm just kind of curious.
No, I mean, uh, it won't be a garage. I'll tell you that, but there, there are we uh, were blessed on that block to have really great cafes. I mean, Forge is steps away and I, you know, could somebody do as, as, as well as they do? Probably, but I, it, people know Forge. So I, I expect that the cafe is not going to be uh, the tenant. Some people have recommended professional services. Even a daycare at one point was, was mentioned to me by someone. I, I'll be honest with you. I'm a mechanic by trade. Um, I'm not in the development business, so I've been learning a lot of this as I go. Uh, if we are blessed with a tenant, that's going to be great. And I'll, I'll be happy if they can do good business on Somerville Ave, but as of yet, no, no real concept yet.
For sure. Um, I appreciate that. And the last thing I had, I, I noticed somebody said face brick. This, this, this board tends to be disfavorable towards kind of, you know, fake non-full course brick. And I'm wondering if we might be able to make a change at least on the ground floor uh, to have something that's going to be a little bit more visually appealing. Uh to have something that's gonna be a little bit more visually appealing than uh I I I think you guys were on the call. Um. When seventy four Middlesex came in and I was talking about the uh facade that I wanted to have ripped off and redone. That had to do with fake brick um and 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 face brick. So I'm wondering if we might be able to have a discussion on the logistics here on. On that.
Yeah, it the the term face brick is a full brick, just so you know. Thin brick is the the fake things you're talking about. We are using a full brick.
Okay.
Right.
Steve, I I know you and I have had this discussion before. Are we all talking about the same thing? I am not. I am not an architect or a materialist. I am. Merely a lawyer. I don't know what the hell I'm talking about.
I believe so. I mean, I think you're talking about the difference between a um. Uh I can't remember the the word for a, you know, sort of brick where it's a sort of curtain wall facade or um.
Like a veneer, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, as opposed to actually structurally being brick.
Okay, so I think I think we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, I think Mr. already meant is it's faced with bricks, not.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a it's a full brick and and it it still is to just for Steve, it still is a curtain wall type of construction. Almost all masonry construction nowadays is because you have a drainage plane behind a brick. It preserves the the longevity of the building, but it is a full. You know. Three and five eighth inch by two and a quarter inch by seven and five eighth inch brick.
Thank you. Thank you. Through the chair, the the word I was trying to think of was veneer and this is more than that, correct?
Yeah.
And just to give some color to that selection, my intent is to long term hold this building through the next few generations of my family. And so the the all the material choices are for longevity, low maintenance. Uh the design is is meant to hopefully stay appealing in generations as you talked about with the previous project, so. Uh fake brick wouldn't have passed muster with us.
I appreciate I appreciate that. Thanks very much. Um I I think the project's. A a great one. I I appreciate the um application you guys have put forward. I don't know if there's anything else that the. Um planning board has. I see Michael's hand raised.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I was uh waiting for you to ask about the stickers, so that's why I wanted you to go first. Um I had the same question with parking stickers. But in terms of things that I actually do wanna zoom in on um. Basically, it's going back to the the unit mix a bit. Uh I'm a little bit concerned with the diversity of units that are being offered here. Uh specifically, you know, would love to see a three bedroom in this mix um. And if not that, I wanna go back to the topic of potentially providing those uh. Uh accessible units to be affordable as well. I think of that as another metric of diversity here on on the types of projects or types of uh. Uh units being offered and would just like to understand if if the project can consider some creativity there.
And the 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 selection of the affordable units, just to jump before I guess Paxton gets in there, the affordability uh. Units is usually a discussion after an approval with the Housing Division and certainly we heard uh the the member of the public's comment to that regard as well as well as yours and we would certainly. You know, talk to them about it. They very well may ask for that unit, uh one of those units anyway. Um but um it's it's a it's a point taken. I don't know, Paxton, what do you you respond to the rest of it?
Yeah, I I think, you know, we're providing the the three lower levels will be will be ADA units. Um we don't, obviously, we're under twenty as well. The same discussion from the from the previous group that we had talked about. The whole reason we could do walk up housing is because we're under twenty units. That's why we get away from doing an elevator. But when I say get away from, it's not it's not a negative. I think it's a positive. Think about MR threes as walk up housing as a as a terms of being accessible in a different way. Because it does drive down the cost. It does drive down the rental cost of being able to live in this building because it is an MR three in a particular scale. So I think there's a unique opportunity for the MR threes to think about walk up housing in terms of the urban condition. I think. Others have kind of spoken of the 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 scale of this building. I think that's the benefit of doing the MR threes this way personally. The the three, the two versus the three bedroom, um we, you know, we we talked to UDC about the two and three. And I think kind of the general building versus apartment building kind of came up when we looked at Somerville zoning. If you look at general building, they they specifically say, you know, it's it's basically. Um unit type sizes and bedroom counts for smaller households. So we take that as two bedroom versus the apartment is. The same thing for larger households. And so that was our kind of threshold when we talked to UDC between the two and three. The. It could accommodate a three bedroom probably in the north building if we if we needed to, but I but I think. We prefer the two bedroom mix in general in terms of affordability for many reasons. Um and that's kind of what kind of where we ended up.
Okay, so that's helpful to know that you guys are laser focused on affordability here, both from a a build out perspective, you know, trying to keep costs under control with having to pay for elevators. Also trying to keep uh the apartments lean such that you can keep them affordable. Can you talk a little bit about your strategy with regards to rent then? Are these gonna be market rate units or is the intention to try to keep them under market in some form?
Uh they are market rate units, um but I think it is a competitive market. I think Alex is, like he said, he's trying to hold this long term and so I. I don't think we could speak to what exactly threshold we're coming in at, but the reason they're lean is because we can drive down the price of the rent. You know, we're trying to hit kind of below market rate rent and to do that, we have to, you know, we have to be lean in terms of how we're planning it.
Okay, I I mean, I would be honest, that's not not the best set of answers uh from my perspective. I think it it would really go a long way if you could find a a an element to. Improve the diversity of the stock a bit. Um do appreciate the general idea and sentiment that you wanna make those those uh ground floor units all uh accessible. So if there's any way to. Make that a little bit more firm, uh would definitely appreciate that. But um yeah, if if you're not uh. Gonna find a way to keep rates low, but you're also gonna make an argument that you wanna avoid. Creating accessible housing to keep costs low. I I feel like you're not doing what you can for the community in that way, so. Uh just wanna kind of put that general sentiment out there. Um and then finally to wrap up, uh you know, would definitely love to hear if you guys have any more creativity around the trash. Uh I think it's definitely worthwhile. Responding to the the abutters' concerns there um. And then the last comment, just, you know, as much as I've been pushing on on uh the diversity here, I do appreciate the fact that you guys are trying to put in a bunch more housing. So obviously, we need it and uh you know, I am at a high level supportive of of trying to get more housing here.
Yeah, I think just to just I think the and I know that Paxton already set up, I mean, that the trash is in the building. So I think that the the comment from the abutter, I maybe they're misunderstood when we said this is where the trash goes, that that in the back there in the middle, it's in the building. It's the recycling that's back in the corner, which actually isn't up against the buildings. If you can see on the plan there, their building doesn't go that far back. So and then they have their trash in the back in that way as well, so. Um it's only the recycling and then Sylvia showed you that kind of robust recycling containers, so it's all contained in there. And then the trash is in the building, so I I think that may just be a misunderstanding. We're not shoving the trash up against them.
So now that now that we have a mouse, can you kind of like circle exactly where the trash is gonna be?
Sure. The trash is right here is inside. It will be closed and screened and covered. And then the recyclings of the north. The smaller amount of bins and that's also we're considering this more robust system of double enclosure, so the bins sit inside this. Uh which are rat proof and rust proof. Um. That's the plan.
Okay, so when you say it's enclosed and screened and covered, would a rat be able to access it? I recognize you're trying to make it difficult for them to to access in general, but. You know, anyone who lives in Somerville knows rats are pretty uh resourceful.
Well, the claim the claim of this system is that uh they are rat proof, so we'll have to look more into it. That's that is really kind of like popular in New York City. Uh and I'm sure it's not the only brand. It's called City Bin um. But the, you know, that's what their the whole marketing is about. It's about being rat proof. Um so. Again, that's that's kind of part of the plan is to try to find strategies to do that um effectively.
Okay, I I appreciate that. If that's really front of mind, then that's helpful, because I think. You know, it's one thing to kind of manage the the concerns potentially around visuals or smell, but I also would be super worried about creating a source for. More rats to be living around there. So if you if that's like front and center, that's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Michael, by the way, I wanna. I I I started to laugh. You you started talking about trash and you said, well, now that we have a mouse uh.
I know.
Nice. Uh that was unintentional, but I like it.
No, say it was intentional. Take the credit, man.
I wish I could.
Uh who else at this point would like to talk? I see Luke.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll I'll be real brief. Um appreciate a bunch of the comments. Um I appreciate the responses to things like the. Concerns around the trash. It feels like a lot of the details of the project haven't thought through carefully. Um echo member McNeely's concerns around the unit mix, so just another voice interested in pushing there. Um the the couple other thoughts I I wanted to share. From my favorite spot, I grew up just on the Cambridge side of the commuter rail tracks on at the end of Oxford Street. So I know this area really well. The in terms of noise, no one seems to be raising big concerns about that, but you know, the trains. You get used to it right away and if you have any remove from it on the other side of the street, you you hardly notice it at overtime at all um. And just big picture, I I really love the mix of housing first for commercial there. It's it's a weird stretch of Somerville Ave where. If you're looking at this property to the left, you you get the like awkward strip Molly place with the laundromat and the subway and it's not very walkable at all, even though it's so close to Porter Square. So things have been added along this stretch between Porter and and Union, and I feel like this project. Will add people and just vibrancy and if we get good commercial on that ground floor, it'll feel much more like a neighborhood that could could, you know. It's gonna take a lot of changes of for many properties along that whole stretch. But this is exactly the kind of puzzle piece that I think could get us there to a a a better neighborhood feel between Porter and all the way up to Union, so. Um that's something I like a lot too. So that that that's what I got.
So anybody else before we. Move along? Okay. Um.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, John.
Sorry, if if you wouldn't mind, I do have a question for the applicant team.
I don't mind at all. Oh, you know what's weird, John, is the 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 raised hand thing. You're on like a tan background. So the raised hand thing is blending in with your with your backgrounds. I have a guess.
No, not not at all. I'll have to find the Simpson colored hand and it'll take some uh some research there, but I'll certainly find that. But thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I just wanted to say that, you know, I certainly appreciate the applicant team's efforts uh for this project. I do think that Somerville needs additional housing. Um I think what what um the questions and concerns raised by most of my uh colleagues is something that I shared, so. So I don't I'm not gonna ask any any uh any questions in repetition, but I do wanna better understand when it comes to. Uh when it comes to the building um energy source, um I know in in one of the neighborhood meetings. There was a conversation around fossil fuel hookups versus electric and at that point in time, the discussion was around. The building is more more likely to be electric. Um just wanted to see if the applicant team has any updates or any any other thoughts around, you know, energy conservation and efficiency at all. Yeah, it it is an all electric building. Um. It's kind of by our energy code. We have to do that now anyways, um so it'll be basically just electric. That that's our only choice. Okay, and is there any any other thoughts around even, you know, conserving energy, you know, even with with electric consideration? So I think one of the one of the, if we take a step back, just like a housing typologies, like the double loaded corridor is probably the least efficient building you could do because you lose. Cross ventilation because you have a middle corridor. You can no longer have differential pressure on two sides of a building. Since I did, we could do walk up housing, we could actually have exposure on north and south simultaneously. You could open a window on the north and open a window on the south. With cross ventilation, you don't have to turn on your air conditioner, for example. So inherently built in the typology, I think it is more energy conscious, let's say. Um on top of that, if you, I have to go back to that section, but but we do, you know, the balconies are completely shaded in the summer, but then they also let sunlight in in the winter, for example. So there's a a recess in the balcony that's intentional to to kind of maximize solar heat gain in the winter, but then minimize it in the summer, for example. So I think there's a lot of passive strategies that are good. We're not actively generating solar power. Um it's not part of the project right now, but I think the passive strategies are very strong with with kind of walk up housing. Understood. That's very helpful. Thank you so much to the applicant team and thank you, Mr. Chair, as well.
Okay. Anybody else? I can't see your hand because it's on a tan background. Wave malically. Alright, um great. So I think we've had a a really good discussion. I think um there's some things that that we need to think about as a as a planning board. Um one of the things I might ask, just because it was raised by two of my colleagues. Um. Is not necessarily a a a a replan, but maybe a discussion next time on a potential to amend the unit mix. Um. Just because that is something that we always kind of keep an eye out on and um, you know, several of my colleagues uh raised it. Um it it may not be feasible, but it is certainly something that I think is is worth talking about. Um. So let's do this. Let's leave the written comment open until Friday, the twenty ninth at nine AM. Um. Was it the Planning Board at Somerville MA dot gov?
That is correct. Planning Board at Somerville MA dot gov.
The 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 address has changed um to the twenty ninth at nine AM and. Let's reconvene in two weeks. Next meeting is the fourth at six PM and um we can see where we're at. But I think I think pretty pretty generally, we're we're supportive as a board, um or cer- certainly I am as as one member on on your project, so. Um I'm looking forward to continuing um continuing this discussion, so um. Is there anything else that you as the applicant team wanna raise before we move to continue and I go get something to eat?
Yeah, no, I I appreciate all the feedback from everybody and thank you. This was a great discussion. I appreciate you taking so much time with us. Um. Yeah, I mean, we'll come back next time. I mean, keep in mind, it is only an MR three project. It's a relatively smallish building. The unit mixes have been sort of discussed and we went over this with the UDC as was said. It's not like we haven't. Like we were just trying to not do it. We've actually looked into it. We just felt this was the best way to go and this is not a kind of a lean, not a super profit building. We're not building a high rise. We're not high priced national developers. It's just the Varela's family doing a smallish building. So just to keep that. We'll look at it. We'll look at it. I'm just saying that we.
I figured that was gonna be the case, but.
But it's certainly we can look at it for sure.
Discussion I think is is certainly worthwhile since since we've had that.
Now, I just wanna set expectations as well. But yeah, we will go back certainly. I um the Shell dolls are very smart people. We'll take a look at it.
Wonderful. Um I would like somebody on some meeting to call me first by person at any point. So you guys are you guys are in good, you know, rare company. Um okay, with this in mind, uh the written comment period is left open until the twenty ninth. Uh next meeting is the fourth. The chair moves to continue this agenda item to the fourth, seconded by Jahan. Steve, can we have a roll call?
Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. See you in a few weeks, everybody.
Thank you.
Um, okay, there is no other formal items on our agenda tonight, right, Steve? Um we have the the open, we have the open discussion um as a new standing item. If anybody has anything they would like to. Raise, it is um for context, eight thirty three. Yeah, okay. If nothing else, wonderful. See you all. See you in a few weeks. Um chair moves to adjourn seconded by Jahan. Let's have a, somebody singing?
John Jahan Habib.
Aye.
Michael McNeely.
Aye.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Uh Luke Schuster.
Aye.
And Michael Capuano.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye.
Night, all.